Good evening and welcome to the continuation of the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, January 28th. We're going to nickname this meeting "The Polar Vortex." The board has been in closed session where, first of all, I should say, we have seven board members present, none absent. The board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM tonight discussing employment of employee negotiations, property acquisition, lease and purchases on the agenda, however, nothing was discussed, and the approval of the December 17th, 2013, and the January 14th, 2014 closed session minutes. So will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is public comments. I don't have any blue public comment cards, and I see Mrs. Dornar, and everyone else seems to be an employee of the district in the audience. So if anybody has anything to say, please come on up, otherwise we'll move on. Next on the agenda is superintendent's communication. Mr. Purnell.
We're going to start this evening with a review of our school and district improvement plans. Dr. Johns will lead a short discussion on these plans. They do need to be approved tonight from the Board of Education, so that is later on your agenda. Dr. Johns?
Thank you. On the table in front of you and on board docs as of this evening are the school improvement plans for each of the schools in the district and the district improvement plan, which is part of the Rising Star process that is also on the table in front -- on the table in front of you is the Rising Star process. All the SIP plans were in board docs. In accordance with the board policy, 615 school accountability, the board has asked to continuously monitor student achievement, the quality of the district's work. If the district and/or any of its schools fail to make adequate yearly progress, the superintendent is directed by state law to take action and to create responses designed to increase the likelihood that the district and/or the schools will make adequate yearly progress the next year. As a result of status under No Trial Left Behind and recently revised Illinois State Board of Education procedures, York High School, Churchville Middle School, Fisher Elementary School, and the entire district are going through the rigorous improvement process called Rising Star, which I discussed for you at length last year. We're in our second year of using the Rising Star process. It is lengthy, and it's considered to be a continual improvement process, meaning that we're always using this process. It appears that the state will continue to fold more and more of their improvement and accountability measures into Rising Star as we go out into the future. At a district level, a district team and then teams at each of these schools utilize this methodology to focus on a number of questions which are designed to evoke deep and sometimes difficult conversations. Through analysis of data, examination of best practices, and a collaborative process, each school and the district teams assess their greatest needs and prioritize them in a manner that leads to success. The teams are meeting periodically through the year to review progress. In most cases, the teams met so far in fall, and according to guidance from the state should be meeting again in March and then again in May, so they can use the summer to continue their planning and internal instruction and development. Although the improvement process is ongoing, the state suggested at one point that it was going to take two years before one could adequately get through it. In all likelihood, it never stops, that you continue to add more and more indicators that you review and monitor them for progress, and then you start all over again once you've gone through the full cycle. Included with these documents are the -- on the board docs are all the SIP plans for each of the schools. In accordance to the wishes of the school improvement -- I'm sorry, the CNI Subcommittee from last year, we streamlined the goal documentation process for the buildings. Each building uses a building leadership team to set its goals. They do so either in late summer or early in the school year, and the building leadership team, in concert with the leadership of the building, whether it be the principal or the assistant principals and chairs -- thank you, Meg -- have designed plans for their own improvement. In years past, the documentation for these goals could take up to six to 12 pages of documentation, and the Subcommittee thought that it would be a much better use of the school's time to make it short and concise and spend all that time not filling out forms and documents, but put it into actual work. And so we are enrolling this year the Plan on a Page format, which summarizes everything, I think fairly concisely. It's new, and I think there are some growing pains that we will experience, and certainly I'll take your feedback back to them. Indicated on each of the school improvement plans and on the cover sheet that's in board docs is really not quite a thorough crosswalk, but certainly some allegiance to our DPIs. So in the far right column of the summary document are the DPIs that the principals thought were covered in their school improvement plans. We see a range of plans recognizing that each building is different. You have a different set of goals. And so in some cases, the principals and their teams dialed on a very small target for an area of improvement. It may be a very high-performing school. Other schools took broader, more widely encompassing targets or goals. I think it's important next fall, then the data comes back, that at some level, whether it be at the Subcommittee or at the board table, we look to see the progress in accordance to the goals that we have on the summary page on the school improvement plan. It would be a great way for us to come back and say, here's our results, and here's how it ties back. And I think that will add to looking out into the future of the district, kind of close a loop there, so that we improve the quality of our goal setting, certainly at this kind of 30,000-foot view. So I'm asking that you approve these goals. In particular, the district improvement plan needs to be approved by January 31st, so that we can have access to our Title I, II, and III funds. I am available for questions.
Are the schools that aren't required to do Rising Star, are they doing Rising Star? Did you say -- you might have said that.
That's a good question. I did not differentiate very well. Only the four schools that have not made AYP a number of years in a row are using Rising Star. Based on the likelihood of getting No Trial Left Behind passed -- I mean, our schools to meet No Trial Left Behind next year, whenever we have two schools -- I'm sorry, whenever we have a school that's in its second year, then they have to start Rising Star. So we'll have another group of schools come onboard with Rising Star next year, and then the year after that, all of them would be, yeah. The state at this point would like us to have all of them regardless of whether or not they're required or not. The problem is, is all these building principals will tell you, it is an extremely high amount of work and labor that goes into completing these Rising Star plans. I think you'll recall from last year, one of the schools had 20 meetings to complete their part of the Rising Star process. Now, what's nice about it is it takes kind of a project management approach in that we typically don't see in education. So earlier this fall, parts of the committee met at the district level to indicate where we were at on the tasks that we set forth to do a year ago at this time. And so that is nice, and that's part of the next thing we'll do in March at the district improvement plan, is take stock in what we're -- where we're at on some of the tasks that we have in place so far.
Karen?
So my question is along those same lines, Charles, is I know that we have the Rising Stars plans, and we have the school improvement plans, and so can we help communicate to people what those differences are or the linkages for that very fact of what we're trying to use them for is goals and looking at improvements from year to year and intentional work that's being done.
You know, I think it's a great idea. We've completed the Rising Star process really to follow the Rising Star process. I think what would be a great option for us this spring is take the DPIs and work backwards and indicate this one is being addressed through the Rising Star process as well. I think it's just a lot easier to communicate. If you look on these forms, we're talking indicators IA-07. It just doesn't resonate for people, but if we get to the outcome that we agreed on as a district and say, these are being addressed as a Rising Star, and how, I think that has a lot of merit.
Dr. Johns, I do have one comment. I just want to applaud the fact that you've taken a page out of Baldridge and Deming and gone to the Plan on a Page with the increasing demands on our principals and our administration, and also from a school board member's perspective. Frankly, when it's a dozen pages long, it's hard to follow. When it's on one page, it's a lot easier to follow, and I think it's better communication with everybody that's trying to comply with the plan. So thank you. I think that's a great initiative.
My next item is bringing back the staff projections and recommendations. Again, in response to the Board of Education questions from the last meeting, you have a memo that I put together going into more detail on how the staffing projection and recommendations that you have before you this evening were arrived at. And they're divided into the rationale of class-sized targets and how we calculated at each level what happens at the general education staffing issue, which is a recommendation of nine certified staff for mainstream teachers. Also, again, for special education, I added some detail and two documents explaining the process, the workload process and rationale for special education. And with the English language learners, I added a specific chart that Dr. Johns and Karen Molitary had developed, looking out at the projections by building and by increasing ELL populations over the next two years, about how the projections were arrived at. Let me say, just emphasize a couple of points. Number one, this is a staffing projection. It is not a staffing, precise recommendation and approval process from administrative perspective. The board has asked us to come up with staffing projections in January, and that's what these are. These are based on maximum staffing projections. We had tried to take into account all of the scenarios of whether or not a staff would be needed in each area, and if it appeared that there was a possibility of adding a staff member, that we had good information that seemed to indicate a staff member may be needed, we added it to the projection. That does not mean that we are going to go out and hire all of these staffing projections that we see in front of you this evening. What we do is, we use these as part of our budget process, but in the actual hiring of staff, we go back with these projections and we meet with each area, either department or with the building principals, talk about their staffing needs, and there's a whole nother process we go through before we approve an actual hiring of a staff person. So when you see the number of staff people in front of you, that does not mean, again, that we are going to hire each one of those positions. We are very careful, and it's a cabinet discussion, there's a process we use, of looking at the reason, the rationale for the request for the additional staff person. We evaluate that at a cabinet level, and then we give the approval to go ahead and actually do the interviews to do -- start doing and filling the position. So we do that with every position. I will tell you that probably the positions, pending on the discussion tonight, if the board is comfortable with the projections, probably the biggest one that we would go out right now is probably at the high school level with the staff members that are needed. Part of the plus of doing this early is allowing critical needs to be approved and hiring process to take place ahead of the curve of other districts, which always gives you -- gets you in a better position to hire the best piece of person possible. The longer you wait during the school year, during this year, more of those teachers are scooped up by other districts, and there's less and less of a pool that you're drawing from. So that's the advantage of doing this this early. We are fairly confident of the numbers in front of you for the high school. We believe that traditionally parochial schools give us about 100. The difference between the senior class and the freshman class is approximately 35 students. You add those numbers together, and it appears that the freshman class will be somewhere in the range of 130 to 150 new students. That certainly dictates at least six FTE at the high school. So that would be one area where I see no reason to wait. We would, of course, meet with Diana Smith, formalize this process, and then allow her to go out and interview in this process. Special education is dependent on IAPCs. This is still early in the year. IAPCs for the end of the year and transition usually do not occur until the spring. So again, Meg would be looking and meeting with principals, looking at special education caseloads, looking at the kind of students and the categories that we have in those students, and then finalizing the hiring process for special education staff. Again, that special ed is six certified staff is what she's projecting right now. Do we need all six? We won't know that until we get closer to staffing, but that is, again, the conservative projection for moving staffing forward. ELL, the same thing, five certified staff. Do we need five staff? We're not going to know that until we actually see the numbers, see how many ELL students and where they are in locations, but best guess estimate right now would be as many as five certified staff. Let me give you a scenario where we think at, especially at the elementary and middle school, that the numbers may be somewhat less than we presently have. Again, and I've talked about this the last meeting, but depending on the kindergarten enrollment, depending on how many kindergartners come in and how many first graders come in, we may see less than a plus additional staff member at the elementary level. That, again, is a kind of a worst-case maximum staff projection. Same thing at the middle school. We're losing students at the middle school, although a same-sized fifth grade is moving in to the middle school. The two additional staff on that is to take into account additional staffing that may occur because of students enrolling in classes. Again, we won't have a good idea of what those staffing projections in actual numbers are going to be until we get closer to students registering for classes. Once we have that, we meet with every principal at the middle school and elementary level, discuss their staff needs, look at their numbers of students enrolled, and then make a decision on staffing. So again, what the board is approving tonight is a projection of staffing that allows us to go and start the hiring process. That does not mean we go out and hire 20 staff people tomorrow. That's not the intention of this. So there's a verification process that goes on before any hiring is done. Again, we wanted to give the projections for you for two reasons. Number one, so that we could start the hiring process and maybe get ahead of the curve on some of the other districts, and two, to have an understanding of what those projections will do to the budget on a kind of worst-case scenario basis. Some of this staffing does go to maintaining our DPIs and the trajectory that we have with student achievement. We have not increased, for example, class size. We have put in supports for students, both at ELL and special education, that allows us to continue to reduce the achievement gap for those students. If we did not staff at those levels, there is a chance that you would not be addressing the achievement needs of those two groups of students as adequately as we have so far. And one of the things that Meg can talk about is, for example, guidance study class at the high school. We're seeing great success with that class for special education students. Those students are achieving great results as a result of that class. We are continuing, in this scenario, to continue to staff that center. If we did not staff that center, then you do somewhat jeopardize the success that that center has had by not staffing it at the present level that you do. So that's just one example of the decision on staffing that goes into this. So again, staffing that we put in place last year, we're maintaining this year, we're seeing success in those, and we want to continue with that same level. I understand that 20 staff members is a large number of staff to project for the following year, and understand the concern from the board. So again, this is, again, a worst-case scenario, but we should talk about how comfortable the board is with that 20, and whether there's another direction the board wants us to take in this staffing recommendation. So with that, I'll open up for questions or comments.
Let me ask the board, would it be useful to segregate the general ed from everything else in our discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. You want to start out with general ed? Not all at once, really.
No, go ahead. I'll go second.
Chris, go ahead.
I mean, the only thing I was going to say is just to point out that the general ed is driven by a class-sized target, which was, you know, in Dave's memo. So I think K through 2 is 25, 3 through 5 is 27, middle school is 30, and at the high school, it's somewhat irrelevant because of the departmental structure. And so those are the inputs. You take the total enrollment projected, you put in the factor for class size, and that's what the number that pops out. So I think, thank you, and based upon these kinds of inputs, I, you know, I'm fine with it.
I think the other thing to point out in the high school portion of it is, tell me if I have these numbers correct, we're going to hopefully graduate 638 seniors this year, and we project with the parochial school transfers that are fairly consistent from year to year, and entering freshman class of 777. So therefore, the need for a few more teachers. And, you know, Mr. Bloom, you've driven a lot of this process into moving up the budget cycle. It does allow us, by approving, you know, this general guideline, the ability and the flexibility to make offers to the people who we find are most attractive before other districts can do so, and makes us competitive and helps us achieve our goal of attracting and retaining the best people in the classroom in front of our students that we can find.
Did Triple Seven point us anything?
You know, if it's that exact number, I think we should discuss that with the Illinois Lottery if we do win something, yeah. Shannon?
If the large eighth-grade class is moving on to York, does that mean the number of students in the middle school is less than it was this year? There's a large sixth-grade class coming?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's about an even wash right now. I think you're -- you may eventually see in the long term, and then, again, we're hoping that if we hire a demographer, we can have a better handle on this. But we think you may start seeing lower elementary numbers over the next two or three years. If that's the case, eventually, that'll have a dramatic effect on elementary staffing, eventually middle school and high school. But right now, we're seeing a wash between middle school and high school. Again, elementary is kind of the wild card. We don't know what's going to happen with elementary. We could have a decrease in staff when we all get done at the elementary level based on enrollment. But again, we need to see the kindergarten registration, see new registrations that are coming in in February, and then make an assessment on where that may be. If you talk to Chris Welton, he believes those numbers are going to continue to drop. We have --
You're not going to say that, are you?
Public. He tells me all the time, but now in public, he's hammering in my office. So, but that's kind of thing we -- and that's why I want to emphasize that we just don't go out and hire based on these projections. We will wait until we have solid numbers. When we see the numbers at each building, we meet with each principal, and then when we're sure that the actual students are going to be there, then we approve hiring or the opposite. When we get done, we may be saying, you know what, you're going to be living with one less staff at this grade level this year because we just don't see the numbers.
When -- in what timeframe do we have a better picture on kindergarten enrollment? What are the -- are there critical dates or weeks there? We'll have an indication by the end of kindergarten registration, which is, David, February
-- It ends on the 13th, the evening of the 13th, which is a Thursday, I believe.
Of February?
February, yes. So in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
While that doesn't tell us the total registration, it gives us an indication of what that might be, so we can project -- we can compare last year's registration, the previous year registration at the end of that date to what the trend is. And what we saw last year, for example, was we had lower pre-registration date, we had lower numbers than we ever had in the past, and that turned out to be true. We had a small kindergarten class size. So I'm confident that if we have a low registration count coming in February 13th, we're probably going to have another low kindergarten class.
Anything else on the general ed topic? Chris?
I guess the last point I would make is we talk about class-sized targets and being comfortable with that given the enrollment, and I think the other piece that we need to talk about is just, we're going to get to it later, but it is part of this, which is the PMA projections, which is in light of basically a break-even budget over the next two years. I'm comfortable with the class size. I think, I mean, in order for us to make that decision, I mean, if we were looking at significant five, you know, seven-figure negative numbers, we may have a different discussion around that. And if we had huge surpluses, we may have a different discussion on that. But I think, given where we are, I would characterize it as break-even, or within shouting distance of it either way, less than 1% of our total budget, that it is prudent to target the same class sizes and approve the staffing at that level, but I think we have to add that financial aspect to this discussion.
That's a good point. Anything else? Shall we move on to the rest of the section? The rest of the staffing section, I'm having a hard time with the name to put on it, so let's just call it everything else.
Okay. So I don't know if we were focusing on ELL or special ed first, but this is a question directed at special ed. And Dave mentioned the success that you were having in the guided study class, and could you give us some of that information on what that is and how it has benefited the students there?
David, can you post the attachment that I sent you earlier today?
Yeah, it's going to be really difficult for everyone to see. I can actually forward it to you if you would prefer. This year at York, Diana and her team implemented a new format for guided study, and obviously the explanation is extremely long. But previously, the guided study course was more of a resource, go in there if you happen to have an IEP, and go in there and work on your homework with a certified special education teacher. But what they were finding was that that was not helping them to close the achievement gap, which is what we're looking to do and what everyone at York is really focusing very hard on doing. So what they did was develop two separate guided study classes that are focused exclusively on intervention with students and not so much on the homework focus. Those kids are taking their homework home now, which we anticipated getting a little bit of pushback from parents, but it really hasn't been too difficult from the reports that I've gotten. So the first guided study course, which is Guided Study A, is focusing very intensively on students who need reading intervention. And there's a variety of reading interventions that students have available to them based on their individual needs and what their reading issue is. They may have a comprehension issue, and that would be one intervention. They might have a decoding issue or a fluency issue, and that would be yet another intervention that they would be using. Now, this all has to be supervised by a special education teacher. They started it in the fall with the reading intervention one, which is Guided Study A. Guided Study B is focusing on what's called executive functioning. Executive functioning is all of the study skills that most of us take for granted, the organization, the being able to deal with multiple teachers and multiple expectations and guidelines and things like that. So whereas Guided Study A is a full-year-long, Guided Study B is one semester. So they just started Guided Study B a couple of weeks ago after finals were over. So this is a very long, but detailed and good explanation of the two different classes. I did get the opportunity to get some updated map data today, and David, if you can scroll down, you'll be able to see down, you'll be able to see some of the student growth that they've experienced as part of that class. Mm-hmm. So the first one, you can see that the map data indicate for most students, they're seeing an increase in their map scores from fall to winter. So the fall map score is in the blue, and the winter map score is in the red. Now, some of the students, you'll notice that the blue is still higher than the red. That would indicate students who are either leveling off in the intervention, maybe the intervention needs to be done more frequently, or maybe that's not the right intervention for them, and we need to start tweaking that. That's why we have to staff those kind of classes with a special education teacher. It's not just a room of computerized interventions with an aide making sure that the kids aren't cheating or making sure that they're actually on task and things like that. You actually have to have a trained set of eyes to see if the intervention is in fact working. So you can see that there's some information, although it's only been a semester, we do have some really good information that we can share. And then there's another class, too, David, if you can scroll down. So that's just, you know, a simple example of things that are being put into place that are showing some really nice gains.
Thank you. I think that's extremely helpful as we're looking at additional resources, understanding how those resources are being measured and some of the tools and the success.
Sure.
So I think that's very helpful. Thank you.
They've been working very hard over there and really revamping a lot of things. It's, it's an exciting time for York special ed.
I'll remind the board, too. This was driven by the DPIs, the key performance indicators, because one of those is the reduction in the achievement gap between special education and regular education students. That's an identified goal for the board. So as that was established two years ago, this is the kind of result of strategies and thought about how we can reduce that achievement gap, and this is an example of what you put in place, and then you evaluate to see if it's working. In this case, it really appears that it has. And so again, we want to continue that with the staffing that was established two years ago to accomplish that.
And this is just one of many things that they're doing with our students with IEPs over at York. A lot of our students are participating in the freshman cohort, and they're also seeing some nice gains. So it's not exclusively guided study, and it isn't something that just began this year. This is just a facet of a multi-year plan.
Karen?
Thank you. This was absolutely wonderful information for us as well as to share with everyone in the district and the community. And I guess if you look at some of these things, and Meg, you and I have had these conversations, this is for guided study, special education, but I would venture to say, and correct me if I'm thinking about this wrong, is that it would transcend to other students, potential, anyone who is having difficulty with reading, in this concept of, you know, for reading, where are the students, whether it be categorized from the state or the nation as low income or free and reduced lunch or ELL? If they have reading interventions from comprehensive decoding, fluency, as you had indicated in this example, that we could, that this could potentially be a solution for more students. Well, but, but, I mean, where, where do we start to look at, we've got reading programs for some students, you see what I'm saying? And is there overlap? What's overlap? And how do we look at that so that we can transcend more students instead of labeling them because we have to report to the state?
But currently, this particular program is exclusively for students with IEPs. Whether or not it's going to be expanded is something that's yet to be determined. As far as what you're saying, catching students who are having difficulty before we label them, that's through the RTI process, which typically would happen in the, in the younger grades.
I'm sorry, let me clarify. It's not before we label them. I hope we don't label them. I hope we say that there's a spectrum of student readiness to move to whatever needs to be taught next. And so how do we do that? And it seems as though there's some commonalities that I have heard in this district, as I have raised children, from listening to parents and community members, you know, educators, you know, there's some common interventions that can be used. And then, I guess the point being is, how, is there any possibility to use programs for any student that needs that need, for a better way to say it?
The way that that difficulty is being addressed currently at York is through the freshman cohort.
Chris?
Meg, how many students do these two classes represent? I mean, how many?
This is just two grade periods that we were able to grab some information on relatively quickly.
So 60 kids, or, well, I mean, a lot less than that?
Probably 20.
20 kids?
I mean, that's not all that they serve, but the examples that you have is 20.
Okay.
Like, would it be possible over the next several months to get, I mean, I, I think we all have a great interest in the success here, to get more information like this, I mean, about just generally, how many people, how many kids are served and what program, and examples like this of the progress that they make? You know, I think we talked about this before at every board meeting for as long as I've been here.
And I'll be honest with you, I just grabbed this information very quickly once we got Karen's questions this afternoon.
Okay.
So that we had something to give you tonight, so we can get more information.
But yeah, that's great. I, I think it would help the entire board to, to learn more about the services that we offer our students, how we deliver them, what the size of the population is, and how we differentiate among that population. It would just be a great education for the board to have.
Sure, and I can forward this to you.
Great, thank you.
And I think to your point, and what I referenced back to is, in March of 13, you did a longitudinal special ed data study, which is very informative. It was kind of by program and how many kids we have in each. And then the work that you put together in helping us explain how you approach workload versus caseload and how that all fits. So we get the kind of how I staff against this, and we get how many lives are we impacting. And, you know, I think taking that march and then adding kind of mapping this to, okay, so we got the number of kids, so let's map the resources that we're putting against that if we could, and then marry that with this, too, to understand, you know, I think that's what we asked when we went over this in March, was, is how do you define success? How do you find outcomes? How do you manage this? And just giving us an idea, because, I mean, I think we all believe that our goal here isn't just compliance.
Well, absolutely not. And tying it back to the DPIs, which is closing the achievement gap, is what we're working toward.
Sure. But then, you know, across the board, and I know when you get into some of the more severe cases, it, you know, it's, it's a little kind of one-offish, and having the discussion about how do you, how do you know whether, you know, we're doing more than just complying with the law, but are we, are we helping these kids or not? And I know you live with this every day, it would be helpful to share that with us. So kind of taking the staffing model, putting it, you know, against the different programs and who's in it, and then explaining how you define, you know, whether you think it's working or not. I think that would be a discussion that would be kind of the next corollary to the one from last March that I would love to have again.
Absolutely.
And if I can add for at least my opinion, rather than a giant report, you know, a little bit at a time would be, in my eyes, more helpful than, than a, you know, creating a lot of work for you.
We never try and overwhelm anyone in special ed.
Thank you. They consider the learners and give them...
Sorry, couldn't read those.
It was low hanging fruit. Anything else on this topic?
On what, special ed or the rest of the staffing?
Well, let's, let's ask for special ed first, and then the next question will be for the rest of the staffing. Special ed, anything? Okay, rest of the staff.
Besides just, you know, echoing, if we can have just more understanding of what we, we talked about and continue the discussion, and mapping it, I think, is wonderful, not only for us, but to ensure to our parents, communicate to our parents and to our students and to the community how we are looking at student outcomes in addition to what we're mandated to do, but it's really about outcomes for students.
All right. Shannon, go ahead.
I, I echo that because she came in, she, sorry, Meg. It was September that Meg gave that group, that group presentation. It was March and September, and the board collectively said, you know, what is our vision? And we talked about outcomes. So I echo that. That was our, our consensus. And also, just as we talk more about this, it'd be great to have some comparisons to how other districts handle special education, too, just to, you know, so we're not just talking about, here's how Elmhurst handles it. It helps me, too, to have a broader perspective.
Anything else on the special ed portion? Then let's move on to the remainder of the staffing plan. Anything? Yeah, Shannon, go ahead, please.
For the ELL, I, I thank you for the extra information. I noticed that the numbers are going down for next year for ELL, but then we need the additional FTE, so I wasn't sure how that worked.
Yeah, this is an interesting paradox. Where the population is increasing, we have very small programs now, and so it takes a relatively minor increase to trigger fairly medium-sized increases in staffing. You'll also notice in the document, we've kind of broken out some students between high need and moderate need, and we have a number of students that we classify as high need, so they'll need more intense language support services. And I think as a district, we are, well, I know as a district, we're responsible to monitor students for two years after they exit the program, and, and it's important that we, we need the staffing to do a better job of that. Because it's incumbent upon us to make sure they're successful once they leave the ELL program and go into a mainstream program. We continue to watch them for two years to make sure that they really did make it into the mainstream program. Additionally, you'll note that the largest increase is at the high school. We have, to make sure that we're offering programs, really in two levels. One is so that the students continue to learn, so we narrow the gap, which is our DPI, but also so that they can take courses towards graduation. And so we have some courses that have been archived, and it's time, we feel we have the students and the needs to start teaching those courses, so we need to add some students. Also, we're dealing with a very specialized population with this tremendous variability between the different students, and we recommend additional staffing for guidance counselor, someone who has a strong background in this area, or people who have a strong background in this area, or simply to devote more time to supporting these families. That's part of a goal of getting them toward, these students towards college and career readiness.
When you classify someone as high need, does that include the diverse languages for which we have no interpreter services available for them, such as some, some very, you know, uncommon, at least in, in the population, languages?
That's an added component of a program, and I think under high need, we're really talking about the amount of formal education they received in their country of origin. We have a number of students who are coming from relatively poor parts of relatively poor countries, and so at times, they're coming with maybe being in a middle school age with three years of formal education, and even that at a, a non-Western style of education. So for the most part, that's what we're talking about, but also you raise a concern that we have, is that we're seeing, we're now seeing, and you always see this as a program goes, more diversity within a diverse group. And it certainly makes it more complex, and we will constantly have to be vigilant about being able to find translators and support services for populations that are very small in our community, and they're hard to find translators for. I guess that's part of the beauty of living next to a large metropolitan area, is that we tend to be luckier than most, most school districts in the country, but it still is a challenge.
We were up at Churchville and talking to some of the ELL folks up there, and they echoed exactly some of these things. So it brought it home on a very concrete level, some of the examples that they were telling us.
I just have something to add about the preschool population and ELL. I got some information from Susan Conrad. She had some really interesting longitudinal information about Madison and the ELL population there. So I just want to share that with you, because part of the reason we're asking for an additional speech pathologist is to support not only the typical language and articulation of the students over at Madison, but also to support the actual English language that they're trying to immerse these students in through their program. So in 9-10, we had 44 students who were identified as ELL at Madison. In 10-11, we had 82, so we doubled in a year. In 11-12, we had 87. In 12-13, we had 103. And in 13-14, we currently have 105, but the school year is not over yet. So we're more than doubling. Just little information.
So to add on that, we're to the point where a quarter to 30% of our incoming kindergarteners are going to go to Madison and have received either ELL services or special ed services.
Or both.
Or both.
What is the current total population at Madison?
Changes throughout the year because the students become eligible on their third birthday. So I would ballpark it right now at about 175, and we'll probably end the year at a little over 200.
Thank you.
So to follow that up and prev, and our, and to link it to our previous board conversation, of those numbers that we're seeing in ELL and early childhood, are they a variety of languages? Therefore, we have to hire a variety of certified teachers? And then the second question would be, and once those students go beyond early childhood, how does it enter into our system? And how do we address that if they were throughout the entire district? You see why I was asking the question I did last?
All of the teachers at Madison are double or triple certified. We are getting triple bang for the buck out of those teachers over at Madison, because not only are those ladies early childhood certified, they're also special education certified, and Mrs. Conrad has pushed for all of them to become ELL certs as well. So they're able to teach students, you don't have to be speaking the language that they're coming in with. It's a certain methodology of teaching that allows them to begin to understand the English language, but the fact that these ladies are triple certified is really something that this district should be proud of.
And the way, when we have to really start adding staff of a particular language is when you have 20 students of a particular language at one school. So that's, that's one of those weird triggers that could kick off. For example, let's say Polish, where we get, a field school has 20 students that speak Polish, they don't yet, but that could cause an additional bilingual staffing that we'll need to hire, obviously, than in Polish.
Actually, Brad was just able to pull up the current numbers at Madison. I was quite a bit off. We are currently at 257. So off the top of my head, it's not exactly accurate.
Sorry to put you on the spot there.
Just, just to point out, though, the implications of that, if you, if we are saying that a third to a quarter of our students are coming out of Madison or already identified with ELL or special education, that's going to have a ripple effect, again, coming down all the way through the system, because, and you can start to see that in some of these charts in the ELL, where all of a sudden, instead of one building or two buildings having that population, now you've got five. Eventually, I'm sure every elementary school, we will have to add ELL staff, because you can see the numbers and what's happening. It's becoming much more diverse, and when you already have a feeder system that's giving you a third of the students coming in, it's significant. The advantage for us is, while the numbers are huge, we're getting to them so early, as Meg said, if we can get students who are three years old coming into the program who have ELL needs or special education needs, we can do a lot of remediation much more quickly and much more effectively at ELL than we can when they walk in the system in middle school or high school. It's just extremely significant. It's just extremely significant when you get the students that young and make those changes. And you can see that at Madison. When you look at the Madison data, it's remarkable how much progress those students make at Madison from one year to the next coming forward. And some of them are coming in with huge academic deficits, and in a very short time are at least getting them up to a running start going into kindergarten in our buildings.
I've also asked Mrs. Conrad, and she shared with me, that she's looked at the data for some students who started five years ago. And a lot of those students have already transitioned out of ELL services. So the Madison base that they're getting is really working.
That's great. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, and I'm fortunate to be a liaison to early childhood this year. And it is remarkable, you know, Meg, we do appreciate what they do. It is incredible, the certification and the qualifications that they have, and how they work with the students. So that's wonderful. You know, the point being is, as we manage, you know, and our stewards of education on behalf of Elmhurst, we're looking at, you know, do we entertain different models that are sustainable versus what we have done? And so that's why the questions, because as you look at the financial projections, you know, if we just continue looking at the same, I'm going to call it math equation, we can't, it's not sustainable. So that's the only reason why we're asking all these questions, so that we can truly articulate and demonstrate better outcomes for students.
Mrs. Conrad and her staff really deserve a lot of credit for this triple certification. Because a certification is not just one class. ELL certification is six classes, so that's half of another master's degree.
Any other questions on the staffing plan on any part of it?
Are we doing some kind of approval, or we're just, I don't know?
Dave, what are you looking for from us tonight?
Yeah, I'm really looking for consensus of the board, that you are allowing us to go ahead with starting that staffing process, which is to then start the verification at the building levels, at the department levels, and then as needed, start hiring, starting the hiring process for these positions. Knowing that we're not going to hire all 20, but that we would be with the ability to hire that staff going forward.
And you'll give us periodic updates as time goes on as to where we are?
Yes.
Karen?
And with that, though, just like we said last year when we were talking about the staffing models, is that we will continue to hear about our programs, and resources, and student outcomes, and, you know, be able to understand it and articulate it to our employees and community, yes?
Sure.
We did this process last year, and I asked this question at the last board meeting, and Dave was able to give me some of the numbers. Is last year, this, when the staffing model was done, it was plus 18? And then it ended up, the actual was plus 20. So it was very close. It was a good process.
We thought it was close. I mean, we did end up with 20 by the time we got in in August. And right now, we're at 21, over the, from the 18 to 21 right now. So again, you know, what I try to emphasize, again, is we're trying to give you a worst-case scenario, but again, there's no guarantees. When you actually end up with enrollment, staffing, those numbers could change. But those are best guesses right now. And so, yeah, we were pretty close. And I think we're going to be fairly close this year. With the caveat that if I have four busloads of kindergartners come in at kindergarten registration, all bets are off, and we're going to be adding staff, so.
Miss, go ahead.
Yeah, just to finish off, and I think you're below what ended up in the final budget, too. I think we had, in the final budget presented in August, we were 22 or something like that, 23. So there are 20, so to support Dave's point. But where I think there was material movement, too, is in the, is in the support staff. Because I think, I think we were plus, we're plus nine over where we thought we were going to be.
Certified staff, we were on target. Support staff, we were not so on target. I think we projected nine, we ended up with almost 20.
Those don't dent the budget as much, so.
Anyone else?
One comment, just to say thank you for, I know it may have taken additional time to pull together some of these background assumptions and charts and information, but
it was extremely helpful to try to understand how those numbers were arrived, and for us to better understand how those numbers were arrived, how those resources will be used, and the measures on those resources. So again, just to thank you for this additional information.
So we have, do we have consensus of the board to allow the administration to move forward with these plans as they presented them? And with the understanding that we'll be updated along the way?
Nods, okay. I mean, they're mandated, they're state mandated.
It's true.
As we talk about the PMA projection, it's still wanted, we need to talk about, you know, investments in our district also that are non-mandated. So that's another piece for you, and we have to fit that in also.
We agree.
So is now the right, I mean, this comes under staffing, and that was on my list of things, too. I didn't know whether to talk about it here, PMA. And we've been talking about PMA. I mean, in my mind, the relevance to the PMA is just an updated look at, at the next couple of years of what the projected, you know, deficit or surplus is. And it's slightly negative, but it's within a half a point. And in my mind, that's, again, on a worst-case scenario, I mean, there's kind of a range here, this is the bottom of the range. In my mind, that would indicate that we should at least ask the question of Dave and his staff, as to, you know, what, what should we be thinking about from a professional development, building level support, technology support? You know, some of these things that I would argue aren't necessarily optional either, if we're to keep staff and avoid turnover spiking. I would be very interested in seeing what, you know, obviously, you guys understand that we're not rolling in money, so, you know, it's not, here's a wish list of 48 people we want to hire. But, you know, if we were to make some incremental progress towards helping relieve some of the burden on our, on our building level folks, and helping with investing in some professional development, what would it look like? So I don't know if we have consensus on board to ask Dave if he could, could look at some moderate kind of level staffing suggestions, and to make some of those investments. I wanted to bring that up, to get the consensus of folks to ask Dave if he would do that.
Within the context of, yeah, what, what issues is it accomplishing and solving? And, you know, what future investments that we're looking at? Because we can't continue, it's unsustainable to just continue to use the same equation to solve the problem.
Yeah, I would point out what's driving this is, you know, we have, we have evaluations coming, and Common Core, and assessments, and a lot of mandated things for our, you know, our administrators, that don't come with a check attached or the resources attached from Springfield. So while we talk about wanting to look at investing, and that's why I say I don't know that they're, they're optional. I mean, we're increasing these burdens, they're coming from the legislature. They're not just something that the legislature says, they're good things for us to do. But I just, I just want to make, make it clear, though, that these aren't kind of on a whim kind of suggestions of, hey, you know, let's, let's add some people. You know, I think we recognize we're creating a lot of stress and strain with what's going on, and maybe we can make some progress in addressing some of the issues facing our folks that work really hard.
Sounds like we have another project for you.
When would you like to start discussing this, the next board meeting, the end of February?
What's fair to you in terms of?
Well, we have talked about it before. What I'd like to do is, why don't we do this? Let me, let me try to put an outline together, and I'll try to get it to the board at the next board meeting. If not, the caveat would be the following board meeting, depending on how it goes. But I think, I think what you're going to want to see is, not only the immediate, but what the issues are long-term, and then pulling back and saying, okay, what can we incrementally do? But here are the longer-term issues that we may have to address, even though we can't right now. I think you're going to want to know those areas that, that we need to start looking at. Either restructuring, administrative support, additional staffing, all of those issues that are coming forward, tech support.
Sounds good.
I would say from a timing perspective, I mean, the reason we pulled this forward, number one, was, I mean, first and foremost, you had a RIF deadline that we had to hit. And, you know, hopefully, we've all agreed that we're not riffing for budgetary reasons. Second was the ability to go out and recruit and hire, you know, great staff that's, that will be the first in line for that. But, but other than that, I think, you know, we want to have this discussion, but we want to do it in a prudent manner, so that we're not forcing rash decisions or feedback. So, I mean, this is an ongoing discussion. This, this impacts 14th, 15th's budget. And, and so, you know, if you need an extra few weeks, or if you want to come to the finance committee first and bounce it off us, and then bring it, or you want to go to curriculum instruction and talk about it, or, you know, if you want that process, I think we're open to that. There's, we're not trying to rush, rush the discussion. We want it to be measured and well-thought-out.
When we talk about meeting our key performance indicators, you know, to reduce the achievement gap with students with IEP, we're putting, you know, some of the, Meg's doing the work to reduce the achievement gap for students with IEP. I mean, that's just an example. But I could make an argument that, okay, one of our other key performance indicators, students on track for college and career readiness. If you don't make the investment in some of the curricular technology support, or, I don't know, maybe TOSSAs, I don't know exactly what the solution is, then you risk also that KPI for our elementary students on track for college and career readiness, or our middle school students. So you can make an argument for, you know, any of these KPIs. If you don't invest in, in some of these positions, then, then you risk those also.
Go ahead, Emily.
I just want to say, I agree with Shannon. Because I've, you know, we've had this discussion a couple of times at the meetings, and I think we've talked about, how can technology enhance learning? But I think with this generation, we're getting to the point where technology is just part of how they are going to learn when they get to college, when they get to the job. It's an extension of them, it's just part of their life. It's not like, I think, the way some of us look at it in our generations, where, oh, can this help me somehow? I think for these kids, it's going to be part of their life. And like you said, how do we make them college and career ready? I think, you know, we really need to look at, are we behind? Are we, you know, on par with some of our peer districts, so?
Boy, that's a good point. We are going to have to meet our students on their own terms, in a lot of cases, to, to effectively engage them in the learning process. Yep, go ahead.
So to that point, I'll thank all of the parents and PTAs.
That's a good point. Who have provided us a lot of, a lot of capital and a lot of equipment in which to reach our students on their own terms. Yeah. Emily, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think it's worth pointing out, even though a lot of those things have been donated, they do take our human resources. And so the more of those that we get, you know, donated or not, they are taking resources that we need to look at, you know, our staff there.
Yeah, and that is the balancing act that we have to, that we have to make. Anything else on this topic? Before we move into PMA projections? Go ahead.
Okay, I'll turn this part over to Chris. And based on the discussions this evening and staffing, Chris has updated the PMA projections for you this evening.
So we, we had Doreen Linderman out at the November 26 board meeting to present five-year projections. And since then, we've made a few changes. We tried to limit, you know, there are numerous assumptions that go into the five-year projections. So, so we tried to keep most of the assumptions the same. The only changes in this PowerPoint, they're on pages three, nine, and 13 through 16. So I'm going to start with slide three, with the first change, which is that since the last projection, the CPI listed in 2014 came out at 1.5. It's not a change in the, because that is what we assumed, but now it is a dark blue because it is now an actual instead of projected. Page nine, or slide nine, is where we made changes to the staffing that was discussed tonight, where we went from 627.7 to 647.7. That's the 20 additional certified staff. And then slide 13 and 14 is, is really more where I wanted to talk about the changes in the assumptions. We talked about the CPI. Also, we, we excluded the self-insurance fund. It really shouldn't have been in the, the projection model that we used November 26. It hadn't been used, included in the five-year projections in the past. So, and the reason it's excluded is that it's restricted for insurance, claims, fixed costs, all, all costs related to insurance. So we excluded the self-insurance fund. We added the 20 additional staff for 2015. And then we reduced our assumptions for TIF I surplus distributions. In the past few years, every time we get a revised projection from the city, those TIF I surplus distributions estimates keep going down. And that's a difficult thing to estimate. They're estimating how much EAV in the TIF, downtown TIF goes, goes up or down. And it's a difficult thing to estimate. And, I mean, prior to 2008, I think EAV was probably steadily going up for, for many, many years. And then since 2008, all the way through the current date, we've had reductions in EAV. And, and so, so we, we have reduced the TIF I surplus distribution estimates, more in line with what we are seeing from, from the city's estimates. But the result of these changes, one thing that I noticed, when you, when you look at the total revenue line, and you look year-over-year change, 4.17, 2.69%, 2.63%, 2.73%, 2.72%. The 4.17, what, what, the reason that that's a little larger is because we have the, the hospital refund, reducing the property tax revenues in the budget 2014. So that's why. But, but for the most part, you see that revenues increase about, between two and a half and 3%. And that is what I would expect to see our revenues increase. And that, that is kind of our target, trying to align expenditures to stay within that two and a half to 3% area. And so when I'm always talking about expenditures outpacing revenues, I'm, I'm talking about increasing, expenditures increasing more than that two and a half to 3% areas, where I tend to talk about health insurance, and trend in health insurance is, is 8%. We've been very fortunate that our PPO has been flat for five years in a row. And we're self-insured, and obviously, that, that can, can fluctuate, but we've had a good track record on health insurance, but it is a concern. And in the projections, health insurance is in there with assumption of 8%. But, but that's what, you know, that makes it hard to stay within that two and a half to 3%. Other things that we always talk about are, are staffing, and we also talk about outplace tuition. Sometimes a concern could be the cost of utilities like energy or gas. With the last few years, those, those have been, been with less than two and a half to 3%, which has been, been great. But, so anyway, so that, that's on the revenue side. And on the expenditure side, we see 4.73, 2.28, 2.68, 2.65, 2.48. But slightly more than what you see on the revenue. And the result is, and Chris talked about it earlier, the 2015, we're looking at a, an annual deficit of 435,000. That, that's a very small, small annual deficit. And also, when you look- And the result is, and Chris talked about it earlier, the 2015, we're looking at an annual deficit of 435,000. That's a very small annual deficit. And also, when you look at the start in the fund balance area, beginning fund balance, and really ending fund balance in 2014, is at a much better position at 35.72%. So, then we have these very small deficits, 435, 393, then a little bit up to 1,026, 1,530. And if you look at this next slide here, it shows the red line at the top, that's our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. And in 2019, the 50-year out, 34,584,156. That's 28.44% of annual expenditures. And at our lowest cash flow point, we're 1,042,983, where that's the concern, the cash flow low point. When you cross the line below zero, then you have to worry about borrowing tax anticipation warrants in order to pay bills. And through this five-year period, we avoid that, which is definitely a good thing when you consider our current financial situation, where expenditures are outpacing revenues. Really, that's really all I had to say about these five-year projections. And so, that's it. I'll open it up to questions.
Anyone want me to lead off?
Shannon?
I just have, one thing just jumps out at me. As we look at the low cash flow point, and I'm glad that the numbers that concern me are four and five years out, but, you know, our objective is to have 3% to 5% of our budget in the bank at the low cash flow day. And we're projecting out there where we're going to have less than 1% in the bank. And that's some, you've got to be pretty fancy accurate to live within that, to live within that projection. If that were next year or the following year, I would clearly be way more concerned. But, you know, it's just something I want to point out that we need to keep our eye on as we see future projections. John?
It's kind of a very tight landing, in other words, very close to short-term borrowing. But I think it is a commitment to the community that we're not sitting on cash, which may be a $9 million low cash point might be the viewpoint of some people. But what is the interest rate of tax anticipation warrants at this point, just for reference?
It's really, really low. However, that's not the point. The point is that you're borrowing from your following year's budget to pay for this year's budget. So, now you're compounding your deficit year by year.
Right.
And that's why, in my opinion, you want to avoid that tax anticipation notes.
Where does that, you said 3% to 5%. Is that a standard that we should put? I mean, we have policy, and we adjusted it, and then micro-adjusted it even more on the fund balance. But is there any guidelines for that low cash point?
That is, that's a number that our Finance Committee came up with, I don't know, a year or two ago, perhaps. Chris is looking like he has amnesia.
Right out of the air.
If you can budget to within less than 1%, God bless you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to address, this is a scenario. It's not a prediction, and it is based upon a conservative staffing assumption, which continues throughout the projection. So, I think what we're looking at is directionally. I'm spending more time looking at the next two to three years than I am the out-years. I definitely want those to be positive, but those are things that as time goes by, you put a circle on them, and we see what it starts to look like. But, you know, what this shows me is that you're running, you know, basically, you know, something as skinny as you want to get it, you know, on the budget. I think we have some investments we need to make, but as I look at this, the near term looks livable. Yeah, so if we got to the last two years and it looked like that, we'd be having a different discussion at the table. We have to keep an eye on it. But again, if this year comes out better than the worst-case scenario or the low-case scenario that's out here, then all of these get better because of what we did better than what we thought we might have done. So, you know, I just want to caution, you know, being too concerned about the out-years in this thing. I think those are more for directional. I think that we need to focus on the next, you know, two years or so, because those are kind of more realistic. I mean, I don't know what enrollment projections look like five years out, and I'm not sure that they're that. So, anyway, it's a management tool. So, I think, yes, you guys are making the right points, but I just want to make sure that we don't overreact.
I agree with you, and that's why the volume of my voice is as low as it is, because that's four and five years out. Karen, you had something?
Well, I was just going to continue that conversation based on this slide is why, and to link it to the last conversation. It's why we want to be thoughtful, and why we want to be looking at investments now, because if you wait until out-years, we won't be able to do anything. Because this is maintenance budget, maintenance outcomes, maintenance everything.
Hopefully, not maintenance outcomes. Hopefully, we can continue as we've been doing.
Sizes.
Yeah.
And so...
But our administration has a track record of, over the last few years, increasing outcomes without a whole lot of additional resources, and I applaud that. And I wish them to continue on that track. Go ahead.
To make this tool really meaningful, we need the demographic study?
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Chris?
One other comment, too. And Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, in the transfer among funds, a decent chunk of that represents funding the capital fund. And we have assumed the million and a half worth of maintenance that we should be doing to our buildings in this budget. So, one of the nice things is, I think, when we looked at this in the past, we looked at numbers like this, and we were under-investing in our infrastructure as well, and creating kind of an off-balance-sheet liability, if you will. This represents kind of fully-funded maintenance. It's nothing new. I mean, we're not getting any new shiny things. But, so I do want to point out, too, there that it's a maintenance budget, but it's also the right maintenance budget for our facilities as well.
You know, I'll point out that as part of the referendum that our town, our school district passed in 2006, that was part of it, that we were going to fund maintenance. And I am, I'm glad, I'm proud, that in fact, we are living up to that commitment. Even though in 2006, none of us were on the Board of Education, we're still living up to the commitment that that board made to the community. Anything else? Shall we move on?
Just one other announcement that's not on the agenda, Superintendent Communication. Just because of the freeze days that we've had recently, I just wanted to bring the board and the community up to speed on where we are as far as emergency days and what may happen for the rest of the year. We have now used four emergency days that were built into the calendar. Our official end date in our calendar was always June 5. Right now, with no other emergency days, the last day for school would be June 4 for students. With the addition of one more emergency day, it'll be June 5, and that's the calendar that we put out to the public as the last day of school. So, for this year, it appears we'll be close to the ending date in that calendar. If we go beyond the five emergency days, the processes that we apply to the regional superintendent and the state superintendent for act of God days, those act of God days, if approved, are not needed to be made up in the calendar. And all indications are that as long as you are doing and canceling school because of a weather emergency or a threat to students and a hazard to students, those act of God days would be approved. And so, in all likelihood, our last day of school this year will be June 4 or 5. So, just for planning purposes for parents, that is where we are, and in all likelihood, would not go beyond June 5. So, that's the scenario right now. I am, the way this winter is going, I'm not sure, we're not going to be June 5 and beyond. I wouldn't be surprised, we had a couple more days, just the way this winter is going, but... I did cancel in this spring. I have yet to cancel because of snow.
What is that expression, "Don't mess with Mother Nature"? And I think he's doing it right now. I think he's just taunting Mother Nature right now. Right, right. 17 inches.
We haven't had a hurricane yet either, so...
Can we move on now? All right. Next is the approval of the board meeting minutes from December 17, 2013, January 14, 2014, and January 15, 2014. Yeah, I'm sorry. I do remember that. Our board mid-year retreat, sorry. Now I remember why we had two meetings, two days in a row. All right. Are there any changes to any of those minutes? Karen?
Ellen, I have four. Do you want me to read them out and then email you specifically what they are, just so that it's on record? It is January 14, 2014, excuse me. Page three, when it refers to, shoot, 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 which one is this? First, I'll start with after Dr. Johns was stated in the informal exit interview, Mrs. Stufan asked about the access testing. And it's supposed to read program based on entrance criteria and students exiting the program when it's necessary. And then, the next one is, it's Dr. Johns and then Mrs. Stufan again, and it refers to ELL students. It was not ELL students, it was, so if you could change it to removing the ELL students in that, on that area. And then, it's to bring the students up to grade level and to meet their readiness needs, because that's what they were talking about, is the students not being ready, not ELL. So, that got messed up. And then, lastly, on the last comment, it's talking about cautious of the district's budget and meeting the students' needs and achieving the student outcomes. But I'll email you. Thank you.
Are there any other changes in addition to Karen's four changes to the January 14 minutes? Hearing none, then with the proposed changes, we'll let those meeting minutes stand. Next is board committee reports. Next is board committee reports. We'll start with the Board Improvement Committee. Sure.
Okay, since I did the meeting minutes, I'll read out. And I'm going to actually cover, should I cover a little bit of the January 14? Yes, I will, from a context standpoint. So, these are meeting minutes from the December 16 Board Improvement Committee meeting. But just to frame it, we also had a committee of the whole. It was our mid-year review, January 13. So, we did talk about these items January 15 as well. So, we covered, in the December 26 meeting, we really focused on preparing for that mid-year review. And we covered three items. Community presentation, the Harris survey from a board perspective, and going out to the schools and talk to our employees in those focus groups to get further information around how they responded to the Harris survey. And we talked about our uniting statement. And so, what we're going to do since that January 15 meeting is, our next Board Improvement Committee meeting, we will take those topics, and we will begin to formulate the plans and timelines, and then continue to keep the board up to speed about what we have to do, and to let you know what those action plans are. So, I think that's kind of the best way to summarize what we're doing. But if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Okay. Next is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee.
Met on January 8, and had two topics. One was the review of school improvement plans. We spent just a short amount of time on that because it was coming to the full board. So, I don't need to review that. And then, the other agenda item was our project portfolio optimization. So, this has been an ongoing project in curriculum and instruction. I'll talk. You want me to talk? Either way. I know it's your project. Is he, you're ill or sick? I'll start it out. You can correct me. You can correct me.
Meg's speaking for him. Charles.
Okay. Charles, just correct me if I'm inaccurate. Okay, so we, this is looking into our future, when there are investment funds to be made, how do you decide what projects to start? And of course, there are more projects than funds. So, this is a rubric for prioritizing CNI projects. And what we did is, there are 10 categories to look at, strategic plan alignment, student achievement, stakeholder satisfaction, 10 items like that. And then, you, within those categories, there's a weighting. So, our committee came up with a weighting for each of those items. And we agreed that the best way would be to have some of the other committees take a look at this, because bringing it to the full board is going to be a little confusing at this point. It's a little complicated. It's not in a presentation package form. So, our idea was to let the different committees take a look at it, and then maybe bring that consensus back to the Board Improvement, or, you know, we can decide the next steps. But I'd like to forward it on to the committee chairs, and with some guidelines, and go from there. It's more of a long-term project. Is there something, anything else you'd like to add?
Well, it gives us the opportunity to consider different ventures, look out into the future, investments possibly, and evaluating them against a bunch of different things that we think are important for the district. So, we, there was a collaboration around how to weight things. I think that's what I'd really like attention to be paid to. We have 10 criteria, because eventually, you can have too many. But we've weighted things. The members who are on the committee weighted them. But it's important that everyone has a chance to discuss those, look them over, scrutinize them, and then we can take another look at it, see how we need to reset it. But I think you did real well.
Do you have any idea of a timeframe? And the only reason why I'm asking is the other two committees meet less often, so we can meet...
The Performance Management meeting, when is that next one?
February 6, next week.
Okay, can that be an item, or is it posted already?
We did post the meeting.
We do? Great. To adjust it? Okay, great. You want me to?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Then we'll move on to the Finance and Operations Committee.
All right, thanks. Couple of things to point out in the last Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Once, the Position Control Report and Cost Accounting, special thanks to Chris Welton and Helen Perez for putting this tool together. This is something that didn't exist in the district three years ago. And essentially, what it does is it... And essentially what it does is it allocates headcounts across the different buildings. And it's a tool that's used, and it's germane to the discussion we just had, in that the FTEs are allocated, and based upon our decisions and our budget and what we're approving, they're allocated, and there's hard caps on those, that if, not to be exceeded, and there's control over making sure that the budget, it's a budget tool, so making sure that our staff doesn't grow faster than what our budget had been. And it is a great management tool that Chris and Helen had put together, and we thank them for doing that. It also helps us get an idea of resource allocation. And, you know, at this stage, it was a very preliminary look, but it had staffing basically by building. And, and we got a window into kind of how Chris and the finance group and the administration managed these staffing levels and make sure that they come in on budget. So we appreciate that. The second item here, all the cross cost and fees, I think we just need to have a heads-up here that, to the rest of the board, there was, they had discovered an error in the calculation of those fees, which is going to result in an increase in those fees for next year, to stay in line with the original board committee, or with the board approved in 2010, I think, which was that the cross would be recognized as a sport by York, but all costs would be passed through to parents. I think due to a calculation error, that fee was incorrectly charged the last couple of years, and it will be, it will be charged as per the board policy there. So just a heads-up in case you get inquiries as to what was going on. That's what happened. Updates, we talked about PMA projections. Insurance committee, I think Chris had pointed out that we were fortunate in having very low growth rates on our insurance over the last few years. Unfortunately, over the last 11 months or so, we've had a handful of larger claims, which is resulting in a projected increase in the, I think if you both think it, somewhere in the 7 to 14 percent range, so, you know, significantly higher than it was before. Our insurance fund is still in a solid situation, so this is more just passing along information. And then Chris indicated that he'd received proposals from the demographer study and is in the process of whittling that down to a recommendation, which we look forward to seeing. So, yeah. Any questions?
Margaret?
Can I get clarification on the second point you made about the lacrosse? I wasn't quite sure what that, what you were stating, what that meant, what was the impact for this upcoming year?
So I think the order of magnitude was, it's like 280 to 4 something. I think the issue is costs, costs weren't absorbed, Chris has created accounts for each sport, and the costs then were what was calculated and were used to determine the fees. Unfortunately, I think transportation costs hadn't made it into that bucket. And so, if you put that into that bucket, you end up with a higher fee than, it had started out higher and it had worked its way down, and because those fees, costs hadn't been in there, now that we've kind of gotten them in the right place, we discovered it. So, the fee, you know, per board policy, which was charging the expense, will go back to the actual expense as per the accounting. And Chris has, you know, Chris has the evidence to do that. It's just a heads-up that if you get inquiries and, oh, what the heck happened? What are you doing? That's why this is happening.
Thank you.
Anything else? Then let's move on to the Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on January 22nd. We discussed and voted to recommend that revised policies be brought to the entire board for first reading on the following items. 360 Administrative Responsibility of the Building Principal. 4100 Insurance Management. 550 Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace. 590 Abused and Neglected Child Reporting. 5120 Ethics and Conduct. 6250 Community Resource Persons and Volunteers. 6310 Credit for Alternative Courses and Programs and Course Substitutions. 660 Curriculum Content. 830 Visitors to and Conduct on School Property. And a new policy. 7185 Teen Dating Violence Prohibited. We re, we brought back policy 2120. Dave was checking into a question, and has to do with the training necessary to invoke the para-evaluation process. The policy was confirmed, and that will also come for a first reading. We discussed advertising. Dave had had the staff do a lot of investigation as to what types of advertising currently take place. It's broad, it's varied, it's school by school. It's very large. We reviewed policies from other districts. There was particular interest in how the Glenbard School District was doing with their advertising policy, and Dave was going to look into that. And we will also ask Maria Smith to please join us at a future policy meeting to, again, consider and to move on with consideration of what would be an appropriate recommendation to the full board. And we adjourned after a very compact meeting.
There were comments during that meeting, Chris, about the efficiency of Mr. McDonough's meeting as opposed to the Finance and Operations Committee. Any questions for policy? Go ahead, Shannon.
Jan, what is the new policy 2120? Board member development? Or it's coming to the next meeting?
Yeah, it'll come for the first, it'll come for the first reading. But essentially, there is clarification of the obligations of the board to engage in training. There's some initial training, there's FOIA training, and there's training involving para. I can't specifically remember the thing that Dave was checking to make sure that the language of the new policy reflected the new law. Dave confirmed that it does, and it'll be coming, and it talks about the training necessary. Before we invoke para, should we need to invoke para for reduction in force, I believe?
Dismissal.
For dismissal, I'm sorry. There will be training that the board would need to engage in.
Anything else? Let's move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Consent agendas are put on our agenda for time efficiency, but in the effort of transparency, let me just run through it really quickly. First is the monthly personnel report, followed by the monthly financial reports that are submitted. The next is the approval of the school and district improvement plans that we've already talked about this evening. And then the approval of the long-awaited 2014-2015 school calendar. Let me ask Mr. Purno just to hit the highlights of the changes between that and the 2013-14 calendar.
A calendar committee met, and as we had met, and as I'm sure you have heard, there were apparent concerns, they were shared about the calendar itself. We heard from staff about some of the concerns with the calendar. So the calendar committee met a number of times this year. We met at least four or five times to try to address some of those issues. And as a result, we are recommending a different type of calendar than I think Elmhurst has seen before. First of all, we are going to recommend that we have kind of two separate calendars. One for York High School and one for the middle school and elementary school. The reason for that is numerous things that we're trying to accomplish under this calendar. First of all, one of the concepts we went in with was that we wanted to continue to have finals at York High School before the holiday break. In order to do that, we needed to back up the calendar earlier and earlier in, for the start of school. And even then, we had a discrepancy between the semester, first and second semesters at the high school. The first semester was shorter, second semester was longer, there was some concern from teachers about that gap becoming bigger. So, for that reason, and because we didn't want the rest of the school district to start as early as we probably needed to do at York, we decided that York would start ahead of the elementary and middle schools. Specifically, York would start on August 15th, the elementary and middle schools would start on the 20th. This also accomplished that, one of the concerns at the elementary level especially, was that with the elimination of a half-day as an option for the first day of school, and the last day of school for that matter, that the calendar was ending up with a full week of school for elementary students, the first week, five full days. And we experienced that last year. Teachers and parents have some concern about how tired students were, about walking into a first full week. So this calendar allows us to start the elementary-middle schools on August 20th, which is a Wednesday. It makes the first week shorter. It also allows families with elementary and middle school students only to take a longer vacation, trying to address some of the issues you heard about a later start at elementary and middle school. It doesn't go to Labor Day, that, you know, that's not what this accomplishes. But it does allow some families to be later in August to start the school year. So it accomplished that, too. Everything else inside the calendar is exactly the same for high school, middle school, and elementary. All of the calendars are the same, breaks are the same, everything else. The only difference is, York would start earlier and end earlier. The other thing at the back end of the calendar, it allows York to have three full days of finals in May, and not breaking up with Memorial Day weekend, which was a concern in the past. So it also solved that problem that we had this past year. We won't have that problem this year because of the ice days, but it will solve that problem in the future. So, that's what this calendar accomplishes. It is different. It puts us on two different calendars. I would also just remind the board that athletics usually starts at the high school on August 13th, is when practices start. Most families are already back August 13th at the high school level. And so that was the other rationale, to start York earlier. So, that's the highlights of the calendar that's being recommended to you this evening.
Thank you. Yeah, please, go ahead, go ahead.
So does that mean that the freshmen will come in Thursday, the 14th?
Yes. Easier that way, John. Next, on the consent agenda is the approval of a grant by YSET, a few years ago, in order to balance the school district's budget, the board raised fees of all sorts. And, a group of parent-volunteer students and faculty at York High School formed a group together to raise private money to assist families at York that found those fees to be a hardship, and they have raised money every semester and every year since. And, working with the foundation, they're going to give out grants of approximately $11,500, and seeking our approval to do so. And then finally, on the consent agenda, is an approval of a donation to Conrad Fisher School. Generously, from the College de Page, which is closing a location. They're donating 11 whiteboards, some bookshelves, computer tables, desk chairs, and some upholstered chairs. Total value of the donation is, hard to put an exact number on, but it's certainly in excess of $500, so it's coming to the board. So, that's what's on the consent agenda. If I can get a motion, that'd be great. Or if I can ask if anyone wants to remove any item first from the consent agenda. John?
I move that we approve superintendent's consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
That's all of them. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by John McDonough? I'm sorry. Moved by John McDonough, seconded by Emily Bastido. I'll get it all straight. Any discussion? All right. See how efficient that was? Do we need a vote? Mrs. Walsh?
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. That's seven ayes, no nays. The superintendent's consent agenda passes as submitted. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings. All of these occur in the rooms that we are in presently. So Wednesday, February 5th, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee at 7:00 PM. Thursday, February 6th, the Performance Management Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, February 11th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Tuesday, February 18th, the Finance and Operations Committee at 6:30. And finally, Tuesday, February 25th, the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30. Next, are there any board communications? John?
An issue on the horizon is apparent issue whether the ACT with writing will be part of the PSAE. There's an interesting article in the Tribune, and I've read a couple other things about it. I'd like to hear thoughts of others, including our superintendent, if we could. My initial reaction is that funding the ACT with writing is a good way to help all kids have an impact on their lives. And I'd urge, my feeling is to urge the ISBE to shy away from creating new assessments that can't serve two purposes, one of which is very important, which is preparing kids for the next stage of life. So I'd just like to hear other thoughts on that issue.
You want me to go first, or do you want to go?
No, sure. Just generally, I support, obviously, we should have had the writing component on the ACT a while ago. I mean, we can emphasize English Language Arts and not have a writing component that we're assessing as a school district for our students. So that's number one. Number two, I think the bigger question is, is ACT the kind of test that I think, and this is my personal opinion, I think the ACT is the kind of test that is still important for students. It's still, at the college level, is the entrance test for students. To then create a new test on top of what is already the kind of test that colleges are looking at, to me, has marginal value. And I think we would be better off to emphasize, continue to emphasize until the colleges say they're not going to look at ACT in AC-type structure to evaluate how effective we are in educating our students. Because ultimately, our students are going to be judged by the ACT, by colleges, by entry workplaces, by their ability on the ACT test, and I think that's the test that we should be looking at. But, you know, again, it's not clear what direction we're going in in the state. So, with that, Charles?
Chris?
One more thing about ACT, though. And I know colleges are looking at many different dimensions, including the ACT, but as a father of a senior who's applying for financial aid, it has a significant impact on financial aid awards. There's a grid, your ACT score determines what part of the grid you end up in in many of these schools. So, it's not just about getting into college, it's about affording college, too.
And I will say this. The other thing is, I think the ACT, as much as any assessment can assess the kind of learning that we're looking for, I think ACT comes the closest right now. And ACT has a vast history of assessment for students. So I question why we would abandon that, to go to something that is untested and unnew, especially with the stakes as high as they are for students in high school. So, that's the other dimension of this that I question.
Margaret?
Just along the lines, I hear a lot of conversation about the ACT, and I hear a lot less spoken about the SAT, which is still accepted everywhere. So I'm just wondering what the thoughts are on the SAT.
Well, I think because of Illinois going to testing all students on the ACT, the emphasis has been on the ACT. I think SAT is still used in universities a lot on the East Coast. I think SAT is still used in universities a lot on the East Coast. That's still the SAT that they still prefer to use. But I think if you're going to test all students, you have to arrive on one test, you're not going to do both. I think for whatever reason, Illinois has used ACT. I think that's the one that, you know, we've been metted to for the last five or six years statewide. And so I don't think that's changing. But I think students can still take the SAT, and they still do. I think it's on an ad needed basis, and we do have a significant portion of students that do take the SAT.
Anything else? Hearing nothing else, we've arrived at the end of our agenda. And I declare this meeting adjourned.